Merrimack TV, are you ready? Good evening, welcome to the October 18th Merrimack School Board meeting. Please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next up is the public participation. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's school board meeting. First, it was decided at a recent school board meeting that we would now allow residents to submit public comments via email. To do this, you may send an email to publiccomment@saU26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomment@saU26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information that we received tonight, our goal is always to read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy in volume, we would just have to not read public comment into testimony, it's an all or nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments in our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would just not be able to read them if we can't read them all. We just want to be sure to address that upfront so that we're clear. I also have a few ground rules in request that will help make the public comments portion of the agenda most productive that I want to address before we begin the public participation and continue with the rest of the meeting. First, you know, for those of you that have been here over the last few meetings, it's pretty much the same rules, but for those that are new, I mean, first and foremost, we are all neighbors in this town. We love this town, it's a town that we live in, we raise our children, and there's many divisive topics out there, but at the end of the day, we all live here and we are neighbors. And they may be people here that you see at the grocery store, the bank, or here, of course, and I just, I think that that's a good reminder. I also ask that you please be clear and concise, whether you're in person or in email, please keep the comments concise and clear about what you are asking of the board. Also, you are directing your comments directly to the board, so please speak to us when you are talking. And for right now, given that there has been a lot of comments lately, we're asking that you keep your comments to three minutes or fewer, if possible. If comments do go longer, I will just give you just a heads up to try to wrap it up. And, you know, next, this is really a business meeting, we're here to conduct business on behalf of the district, so speaking out of turn and interrupting people in any way while they are speaking will not be tolerated. If it happens, I may have to ask you to leave. I would never, ever want to do that, but again, I just want to state this upfront. Please be respectful in your comments, keeping in mind, again, that we are all neighbors. As a board, we will be respectful to you and we request the same in return. When residents do come to the microphone, we ask that you please state your name and your address so that we have it for the record. If you are a student at Merrimack, please just state your first name only and that you are a student, that's for privacy reasons. And I'm disappointed that I have to say this, but no swearing will be tolerated. That will result in immediate dismissal from the meeting. We do have a student up here with us and we have families watching from home, so we just ask you to keep that in mind, it's a community meeting. We do have time allocated until 7:45, so what we will do is we will do what we've done at the last meeting, we'll alternate between in-person and emails, and we can just keep those comments going back and forth between the two. At seven, I'll give a little bit of a notice just before 7:45. At that point, we will move into the business portion of our meeting and we will allow you then to speak again after the meeting. If you've been here before and you are addressing an issue that you've addressed us before, you may want to consider letting those that may not have been here before an opportunity to speak to the microphone before we begin the business portion of our meeting. And finally, we will not allow any public disparagement of any of our district employees or our school board members. If any comments appear to cross the line, I will ask you to step away from the microphone. Again, this isn't something I would want to do, I just, I just ask you to keep that in mind, all of us up here and all district employees either work in this community or live in this community, so again, I just thank you for your cooperation. All right, at this point, I will go ahead and allow the first person to come to the microphone, again, state your name and address for the record, and then we'll alternate to Shannon to read from the email, and then the next person can kind of get in line, ready to go for when the email's done, so go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Naomi Halter, 10 Everest Drive. My kids have had a really great start to the school year. My son is in fifth grade and my daughter is in kindergarten, and they're both so thrilled to be back in school full-time. Last year was hard, and the beginning of this year is still a little hard. There's a lot of kinks being worked out and policies being finalized, and everyone's kind of learning how to do school again after a pretty weird year. As a community, we're also in the middle of looking for a superintendent, and I've been thinking about all of that, and I've been thinking about strategic planning, and I think I would support the school board in putting off any strategic planning for a year or two when the new superintendent is in place and his or her feet are firmly on the ground, and then we can revisit that issue and, and move forward and create a good plan and start bringing some of our issues with our schools up to where they need to be. I also, I'm just going to put in my usual plug for, please continue to follow science-based evidence from local and regional health professionals when making decisions about COVID mitigation measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. And the first email is from Rose Marie Rung, 21 Ministerial Drive. At the Merrimack School Board meeting on October 5th, Ms. Trent spoke at public participation and said that in August of 1996, the Merrimack School Board all left their positions because of what was taught in the schools. This is patently false. I was on the Merrimack School Board in 1996 and for another eight years, during which time only two people resigned, one due to a job relocation and another who retired and moved south. Nothing was taught in our schools at that time, which was controversial. Many others made comments that are also untrue or misleading. It is frustrating for people watching from home to listen to what has become a concerted effort to undermine the authority of the school board. Please continue to base your decisions on valid information, data, and sensibility, and not be influenced by people who carelessly throw out statements not based in fact. Thank you, Rose Marie Rung.
Okay, ma'am, you're up.
Sheena DeBork, Belmont Drive. So I sent out an email earlier, I don't know if everybody got that, but three weeks ago, I started a petition to support the cancellation of the contract with two revolutions. So as of tonight, we have 225 signatures. I do have a copy printed out for you, but I did include that in the email as well. It's my understanding that Lori is going to be making a motion tonight to cancel the contract, so I do hope that the petition could potentially sway any members who are on defense. I don't think this company is conducive to bringing the residents of Merrimack together for our children and for their education. I do think that the money can be better utilized elsewhere, and I am appreciative of your time and consideration in this.
The next email is from Jennifer Jobin, Mary Meeting Drive. Good evening. First, I'd like to say thank you to the members of the school board, school administration, and teachers in our district. You continue to show up and put in time and effort for the benefit of our students and our community during difficult times. It is greatly appreciated. I've heard that there may be a motion tonight to suspend the contract for the Strategic Planning Initiative. While I wholeheartedly support the strategic planning process to outline the future of our education system in Merrimack, I hope that all board members will agree to postpone it. While we continue to deal with this pandemic, there is added stress on all of you, on our educators, our students, and our community. We want to have all of those groups involved in the process and be able to commit the time and energy that is needed to formulate a robust plan that meets the needs of all of our students. Since the district is currently searching for a permanent superintendent, a delay will allow the new superintendent to be in place to lead the process. This will also allow time to better educate the community on what will and will not be involved in the strategic planning process, which will lead to a more positive experience and better community involvement. Thank you, Jennifer Jobin.
Okay, next up.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Motel from 27 Ellie Drive. I just wanted to address the petition that you were just given. I did read through that petition. Whether you use two revolutions as the firm to help you address the goals of your, of the district, which I do believe are needed goals that we need to look into, is not, is not, is not, it's, it's not what I'm trying to make a point about. My point is that the petition stated things, I'm just going to read a quote from it. So if your student is exceptional, either in the classroom or out, they're showing their privilege regardless of race, do you want your hard-working A student to be brought down to a C level, because that's the only way to get equity? So I have students, I don't like to categorize students by whether they are an A-level student or a C-level student or even an F student, they're whole children and they all matter. And I have a struggle that my children, if you looked at the three of them, they would fall either into one or the other category. It doesn't make them less than, it doesn't make them less important, but all of them try very hard, some find it easy to earn straight As. One struggles with the school environment, he is not less than. I used to tell my child to try harder, 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 until I realized that he had learning struggles, that he could not help. When I had, when I came back and I fought and advocated for help in the school environment, he became more successful due to the accommodations that were graciously given to him by the school that he was in. I am proud of the teachers in our district that have stepped up to meet his needs, and I am so happy, because now my child, who used to struggle in school, and due to his struggles, used to take time away from the A students, now takes a lot less time because he's getting his needs met. And I do not, this petition, I, I hope that you consider that, the wording and the phrasing in that, when making your decisions on what kind of firm or policy or program that you use to help benefit our school district to make it more equitable for all of our students. Thank you.
All right, Shannon.
Bear with me, my phone fell asleep. This is from Sarah Locke of Coda Road. There has been an awful lot of distraction and stress placed on our educators and admin lately. Bless them for rising above and continuing to do the best they can for our children. With that in mind, I encourage the board to support the suspension of the contract with two resolutions, two revolutions for the 21-22 school year. In effort to alleviate the stress of multiple outside matters being hurled at our teachers and administration and refocusing on educational matters, while in the midst of the district's superintendent search, I think it's best to take another look at that at a different time, this isn't it. I also want to take a moment to thank Michaela Champlin, TFS, and the Merrimack Police Department for their swift response at Thornton's Ferry last week. It was extremely irresponsible and shocking to arrive at the school and see a disruption to the drop-off line at the elementary school caused by an unnecessary protest of sorts. The community should be reminded that these actions are banned from taking place on school property and that alarming small children is no way to gain support. My daughter is thriving at TFS, and I look forward to bringing educational matters back into focus at these meetings. Sarah Locke.
All right, next up, please.
Hi, Heather Callahan, 5 King Henry Court. Talking about masks again, yay. I just want to say first that I was really happy in the last meeting to hear Bill spoke, and he talked about how important it is, he thought, to firmly establish a metric to go by for decisions regarding masks, to set a data point at which to take, at which to make masks optional. I do think that that's been one of the most worrying things to parents, that without a data metric, these decisions are arbitrary and inevitably, they end up being decided based on personal feelings and maybe biases instead of data. And that's why science is based on data, and business decisions are based on data, the field of education is data-driven, science is data-driven. So I agree that having well-defined metric laid out is absolutely necessary. Also, I just want to make sure that you've all been keeping yourselves up to date on the new information, new data studies, and decisions regarding masks on children in school settings that have been coming out all over the world. I imagine that you must be aware that the US CDC has one of the strictest, if not the strictest guidance regarding masks for kids in the entire world. As new data has continued to come out, it's been reinforcing that schools don't seem to be a source of widespread COVID-19 transmission, and that masks on kids may do more harm than good. Other countries have been lightening their mask recommendations. I'll go through some of those quickly. The United Kingdom just recently revised their policy, and now they say that children and adults are not advised to wear face coverings anywhere inside school buildings. They had only been recommending them for secondary students before they revised their policy. Finland, masks are not recommended for under age 12. In the Netherlands, masks are not recommended for elementary students, they're only recommended in the hallways for secondary students. Iceland, masks are not required for children born in 2006 and later. Ireland, they're not recommended for children under 13. Norway, the Norwegian Institute of Health explicitly advises against masking primary school-aged children. Sweden, masks have never been recommended in the schools, and now they're no longer recommended on public transit. Denmark, they're no longer required in public settings. I'm almost done, I promise. In Switzerland, requirements vary, but no students under age nine are required to wear a mask, and generally only students aged 12 and up are required to. In Germany, masks were recommended and still are in some places, but three states just lifted their mandates because of the new data coming out. Even in Australia, masks are completely optional for children in many areas, and in areas where they're required, they're only required for ages 12 and up. And Spain, France, and Italy follow the World Health Organization recommendations and don't recommend masks for kids under six. So I guess I'm just wondering that with the general consensus of the world's experts being, you know, it's like Austria, they wear them in the hallways sometimes, it's not like everywhere. It's just, in general, the general consensus is that children under 12 should not be wearing masks. And definitely, the vast consensus of the world's experts is that young children, like children under age six, absolutely should not be wearing masks. And these experts in these places say the literal words, the potential harms exceed the potential benefits. And I'm just wondering, does that even give you pause? I feel that you should be concerned to be going against all this guidance from experts, which is being followed all over the world. And I think you should be worried that you might be messing with the development of young children, like these experts seem to assert. And again, if you're not aware of these facts, which I hope that you already are, and aware of the agreement among the experts all over the world on these issues, as decision-makers for the children of Merrimack, including five-year-olds, kindergartners, three-year-olds, you need to be. Thank you.
Next email is from Ashley Lowe from West Chamberlain Road. Good evening, I will keep this brief as possible. First, I would like to thank the entirety of the Merrimack School District faculty and staff for their efforts over the past 18 months. Every single one of the people in the employ of the district made sure our students received the best education possible under enormously stressful conditions. Teachers, paraprofessionals, office staff, food service, custodial staff, and many more. They all made the past 18 months more bearable and never gave up, they never quit. They showed up for their students, I sincerely thank them all. Secondly, I want the school board to extend their pause on implementing two revolutions in our curriculum. This is causing a rift within town like I haven't seen recently, and I think people on both sides of the issue could use time to learn as much as they can about it. If this divisiveness continues, I worry that Merrimack will lose more of the sense of community that we have had in town. No matter the content of the program, maybe it is just not good for the town if it is causing so much fighting and disagreement amongst the town population. We are all residents, all neighbors, and it would be a shame to have something threaten it. Thirdly and lastly, I would like the board to consider implementing a mask mandate within the school buildings for the coming months. New Hampshire had a very mild flu season last winter, largely because of distancing and masking use. Flu symptoms are nearly impossible to distinguish from COVID symptoms without a test. Students will be sent home from school for a cough, sniffle, runny nose, et cetera, and likely won't be able to return until a COVID test comes back. This will cause them to lose time out of the classroom. Masking would help control the spread of flu as well as COVID. Recently, after an outbreak in the district, Bedford, New Hampshire had to go to universal masking for a two-week period. It worked, the outbreak cleared, and cases dropped. Masks will help protect our students from not only becoming ill, but also prevent them from losing time out of class while they await test results. Thank you.
All right, next up.
Robbie Reisman, Iris Drive. Yes, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, over a month off, it's mainly things I'm grateful for, but again, I want to express a lot of gratitude to the teachers and the school staff, you know, for, again, for adapting to all the changes over the last year, and getting this year off to a really smooth start, and like a lot of other people, I'll echo, my kid has been really happy this year, glad to be back in school, so I could not be more thankful for the way things have been going so far. A lot seems to be working, you know, with our current, even with the current mask policy, you know, I know COVID doesn't seem like we've been able to keep the schools open, so I'm very grateful for that, too. I think that's great for everybody. And also grateful for the school board for dealing with all this, too, as well. Now, there's a lot of, you know, great experience up there and different perspectives, and I'm just glad, glad that you all are here to share those. And also grateful for parents and students for doing their part as well. And I'm hoping as well, I'm looking forward to, you know, maybe focusing more as the year goes on, on, a lot more on, you know, education issues versus a lot of this, you know, more controversial stuff that's been coming up. I know, I remember a lot of the campaigns for the Budget Committee last year, and there was a lot of focus on both the strengths of the school district and some of the challenges. Now, I know, I'd love to hear more about people's ideas to address, I don't know, the dropout rate, or, you know, some of my own personal interests, even expanding the gifted program a little more, or, you know, some of the STEM offerings, and, you know, some of the, maybe young riders nurturing those, and, I don't know, there's still a lot of, you know, exciting stuff that I think would be great to focus on, too, and, you know, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
All right, Shannon.
Next is from Dan Coakley at 89 Back River Road. Opinions are like body parts, we all have them. Many have fought and died for us to have them, even when they are wrong, including some from right here in Merrimack. Subjective evaluations of meetings are just that, subjective, and will vary based on the number of people evaluating. Google research, Google research is an oxymoron, as is Facebook research. Anecdotal evidence is not research, though we must accommodate the needs of all students, medical, mental, and social. Many years ago, as a younger man, I marched on Washington for civil rights. We accomplished some change, but that challenge is unmet. I also marched against a war that we ended and had a president refuse to run as a result of our protests. I marched to defeat a president who ultimately resigned. And I attended Woodstock. I tell you this because I lived in those troubled times, and in my opinion, remember opinions from above? We should never, we would never see such divisive times again. I was wrong. Today, we face the most divisive times in our history, in my opinion. Tip O'Neill said, "All politics are local," so the national divisiveness has landed right here in our town. Us, as board members, are right in the crosshairs of this divisiveness. I don't envy your positions. Your goal should be the education and safety of all students of Merrimack, and in my opinion, you strive to do just that. But I fear that the pressures you're under will lead to reaction rather than proaction, and, and that will not serve your goals of education and safety of all students. That would be failure. I know and have worked with some of you, and though we do not always agree, I respect your positions. Please keep the goals of education and safety of all as you vote on all issues. Try to ignore the misogynistic bullying that seems to have entered the discussions, as difficult as that may be. Stand your ground on your goals of the education and safety of all students. Compromise can be like kissing your sister, but is a political process and attempts to appease both sides of an issue. But if the goals and compromise conflict, your goals must be the answer. Thank you for serving in this most challenging of times. Stay safe, good health, and success in your endeavors. Dan Coakley.
Next, please.
Hi, good evening. Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. I'm heartened to hear all the thanks that's being put forth tonight. It's a welcoming change of tone from a community that I know is a great one, and I'd just like to pile on that and take the opportunity to thank the members of the board. I don't think there's ever an easy time to be a board member or elected official, but this is certainly probably one of the most difficult. So thank you for your dedication and your commitment to our community, to the children in our community, and to their education. It's greatly appreciated. You've been through a lot, and I think have handled yourselves very admirably, whether or not I agree with everyone's individual perspectives or not, so thank you. I also want to take the opportunity to thank all of our teachers and our school staff that are working so hard through this tumultuous time to provide education to our children and support. In addition to their already long list of responsibilities, I've witnessed them helping children with their social-emotional learning and making sure that they feel safe and easing anxiety as needed. Children have been through a lot, we, we have all been through a lot, and our teachers are continuing to lead our children through this and identify learning gaps as well from last year's school year, which was, as it's been said, a really weird year. I appreciate the resources as a parent that they have made available to us, so I just thank you for that, and please continue to do so. It is appreciated and used. And as our teachers are doing this work, the best way for them to continue to help our students is to keep our students in school. We can't have students in school if we don't have staff, and the best way to keep our staff here is to keep them healthy. Data is out in numerous studies, not going to go through it all, but masks reduce illness. We've heard we have a shortage of substitute teachers, so if we start losing staff members due to illness, whether it be COVID or flu or anything else that removes them from the school system to provide that education, we risk going remote, and I think everyone wants to keep children in school. In addition to that, there are a number of students in our community that either they themselves are high-risk or have high-risk family members in their immediate household, and they deserve access to safe education as well. And then just lastly, the contract with two revolutions, we are going through a lot, there's a lot of stress on our educators, we are in the process, as it's been spoken about, to find a permanent superintendent, and when we think about strategic planning, we should have all people on board being able to be focused, and while I am not against what two revolutions has promoted as their strategy, it doesn't seem like this is the best time for us to go through something so divisive. As a parent, I actually didn't even know we were going through the contracts, so I think going forward, I would encourage more communication, more community involvement, just so that everyone can be on board and have an understanding where we're going and how we're leading our kids. So, thank you.
Shannon.
Hi, my name is Haley, and I'm an eighth grader at Merrimack Middle School. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to comment on my thoughts.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to comment on my thoughts. I would like to just say that I'm not opposed to either side, whether it's wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. And I feel that since we are a country of freedom, we should have the freedom to choose. We all may choose one of the above for different reasons, as some may find that they are not able to change their mask or sanitize every twenty minutes, while others may have different health conditions or simply just not like wearing one. I also think that everyone should have the right to choose, whether it's students, teachers, staff, or substitutes. I have also seen some of my classmates that don't wear a mask have rude comments made to them or be bullied about it, and I've also experienced it. Things that, things have been said such as, "Pull your mask up, I don't want to get sick from you." "I don't know if you're vaccinated, can you prove it? Can I see your vaccine card?" I've also been told by a classmate to put my mask on despite them knowing I have an opt-out and medical issues. I think it's very unfair that when we have this choice to do what feels comfortable for ourselves and we choose to not wear a mask, people are getting bullied for it. I think that we should be able to choose without having to worry about others judging or getting mad no matter which side of the argument we are on. I feel this is just the beginning of a larger problem to come in the future. If we could come to a better understanding that we are all American citizens and that we all live in a free country and have the right to choose what's best for ourselves, then we will be able to find our way back to the normal that we all know and are comfortable with before this turns into an uncontrollable situation. Thank you again for your time in reading my comment aloud, and God bless America.
All right, next, please.
I'm Michelle Karakatos, twenty-five Swift Lane. I, first of all, just want to commend that young lady for speaking out, that was just perfectly said. Also, I am a school counselor, so I work in a school setting, so I know how hard it is, I'm exhausted right now. I work an hour and ten minutes away. I have two children in the district, and I had to come do groceries, do the daily dues, get my daughter to cheer. I have my little one here tonight, but I felt like I needed to be here because I want to say thank you so much for all those who are in the school districts, for everybody for teaming up. You guys, it's hard right now. I sat at the end of my day just trying to brainstorm because we have such a need socially, emotionally, at our school, where we had to stay late and come up with a plan, and we still don't have a plan for this particular student. Three of the staff members were in tears, ready to quit. I speak to parents day after day, and I know how hard it is on everybody. But the thing I want to say here today for Merrimack is no to Two Revolutions, and here's the reason. Because that money could be better used for what we need right now. We need, we could take that money and hire a psychologist, there's a waitlist everywhere, therapists, they're waiting. Families are at their end, they don't know what to do, they're exhausted, I'm exhausted. We could use that money to benefit our needs right here, right now. I know I've seen a significant decline in social-emotional in my children because of what we've had to do, we've had to quarantine, we've had to be masked, we've had to tell our children, "This is how it is," and it doesn't make sense to them, it doesn't make sense to me, nor does it make sense to the scientific data, as so many have talked about tonight. But I think really the need is to focus on those academics, our children are struggling to catch up. We could use that money for so many other things that we really need here for our kids. Again, I know how hard it is, I know it's a lot, and I thank you guys for coming every single day, it is not easy. But think about what we can do for our kids, what the need is right now. And I would say first and foremost, social-emotional needs need to be met so that we aren't seeing what we just heard in that last letter, that students are bullying. This is October, this is Bully Prevention Month, and we're seeing it, and it starts with us, families, it starts with us. We have to respect each other's opinions, whether we like it or not. We need to be better, we need to do better, and we need to let parents make medical decisions for their children. Thank you.
Next email is from Chris Brown, fifteen Four Winds Road. Dear School Board members, let me first thank all the School Board members and the Merrimack School District teachers and staff for their continued hard work through this very difficult time. Your efforts and commitment to Merrimack families are very much appreciated by many in this community. On September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Merrimack School Board was presented with a petition for a special meeting pursuant to RSA one ninety-seven colon two regarding the use of face coverings and all school properties by all individuals. In reviewing the agenda, I see it will be discussed tonight. Merrimack is an SB two community. It would require a two-step process, a special meeting and a townwide election. I am concerned about this for the following reasons. First, there is a significant cost. According to school district personnel, the cost of the special meeting alone would be approximately twelve thousand dollars. A townwide special election would cost tens of thousands of dollars for the printing of ballots, election staff wages, polling place setup and breakdown, and police details. Does the school budget have money allocated for this already, and if not, where would the money come from? Secondly, I'm very concerned what sort of precedent this will set for future decisions made by the Merrimack School Board. Our School Board members are elected and are, therefore officials of the majority of Merrimack citizens have chosen to represent them. Mr. Olson reported during the School Board meeting on October fourth, twenty-twenty-one, that about one-third of the children in the Merrimack School District have been opted out from wearing a mask by a parent or guardian. This leaves a clear two-thirds majority of parents and guardians who support their children wearing a mask at school. It is my hope that moving forward, the School Board is able to focus on providing a strong education that meets the needs of all Merrimack students. Thank you for taking a few moments to consider my feedback. Sincerely, Chris Brown.
All right, you're up, thanks.
Jeannie Fandosi, Mitchell Street. Thank you all for your time and service on the School Board. The CDC makes many recommendations concerning the health and safety of the individual as well as the general public. Many of these cover issues and threats significantly more deadly than the Wuhan virus. We each have the freedom to follow or ignore these recommendations. Our children deserve to exercise their freedoms with regard to choosing whether or not to wear masks. I second the prior speaker. Please consider following worldwide experts and other countries with unmasking our children for their physical and psychological well-being and development. Thank you.
Next email is from Rachel Pepka, she gave, was it Papke? Papke, thank you. She gave me a phonetic last time, she did not give me one this time, sorry, from Tinker Road, so Rachel Papke. Good evening, I would first like to thank all our teachers, educators, support staff, and administrators, their hard work and dedication to our student, and each other does not go unnoticed. I truly appreciate what they do for all of our students each and every day. I would also like to recognize the hard work of the curriculum team at Thornton's Ferry School and the district for embarking on a new literacy program to provide phonemic instruction to all K to four students through the Hegarty Program. I know many parents who are excited to see and hear about the work their children are doing through this new curriculum. I have one last shout-out for a group of parents who volunteered their time through the Parents and Teachers of Thornton's Ferry School to help paint stencils and create a new outdoor sensory obstacle course at TFS just last week. Their hard work means that the students have an updated space to see colorful artwork and a place to take movement breaks as they transition from various locations throughout the back of the school. I would also like to express my support for terminating the Two Rev contract at this time, as I believe a contract intended for strategic planning should be considered only after Merrimack has a new superintendent in place. This will not only allow the new leadership team to have input and say into strategic planning, but will also allow teachers and educators the time to focus on teaching this year, as well as the time to regroup from the past one and a half years of students being hybrid, full remote, and/or in-person. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Rachel, and again, sorry, I mangled your name.
And just real quick, before we go further, how many more emails do you have left? Okay, and by a show of your hands, who else would like to speak yet before the meeting starts? One, two, so let's just do, did I see a third? Okay, let's just finish those three and these emails. I think it's important, there's a lot tonight, that I'd like to be able to hear any comments and voices before we move into the business portion of our meeting. Okay, so you're up, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Donna LaRue, Pondview Drive. I'm the proud parent of Two Reed's Ferry alumni, and thank you very much, they're amazing. You know, I'm glad other people are going to speak, I wasn't going to speak, but I thought that, I just wanted to say to the board, you're not alone. You're surrounded by teachers and the superintendent's office and administration that are professionals, that know what they're doing. They taught my children how to be critical thinkers. They said to my kids, they said, "Cite your sources." They said, you know, "What are both sides of the situation? Look at it from all angles, right? We all have different opinions, and we all have rights, and it's important to know everybody's rights." And my kids are absolutely brilliant because of it. So I can say that in Europe and some of the other countries, they're doing other mitigation measures. You know, I'm a school counselor as well in a district ten minutes from here. And last year, you know, we had kids, actually, my kids are in college, I'm not sure what they were doing, I'm sorry, but in our district, we were doing twenty kids in a classroom all year long. They were stuck with each other all year long. It was really tough. They didn't get to socialize with their kids, they had twenty kids, they were in school, it was hybrid. And when, you know, there was a cluster, and there were clusters, they all went home. So, you know, that's what they're doing in Europe, they're doing other mitigation measures. So I wear a mask because I'm exposed to eight hundred middle school kids that some wear masks and some don't, but I don't want you to get it if I have it, right? So, whatever. So I just want to let you know that the teachers and the staff, in my experience here, they're not going to let you down. You know, refer to them, use them as your resources, and they certainly didn't let my kids and my family down. So, thank you.
Shannon?
Michael Susalska and Carolyn Harold, Valley View Drive, Merrimack. Our household would like to publicly thank the frontliners, the teachers and building administrators who are navigating this insane situation solely to keep the schools open and the students safe. They do this in spite of differing opinions, disparate messaging, and a variety of opinions on masking. We would also implore the board to not treat masking as a political issue, because it should not be. It is a matter of public health, of keeping the community safe. Please continue to follow the science and ignore misinformation regardless of the volume.
Okay, all right. This abrupt ending, it's, all right, next, please, set the microphone.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Dunham, I live at sixteen Rent Court. And in my personal and professional life, I support a lot of families who have kids with disabilities. Many are immunocompromised, or they may have a sibling or a family member who is. And while I understand that some people don't like to wear masks, and some people have opinions that are, for a variety of reasons, opposed to them, I think that we really need to consider the vulnerability of some children, and being dead is a whole lot worse than being uncomfortable. Thank you.
The next is Michelle Cologne, Jonathan Circle. First, I would like to thank the teachers and school board for their hard work and perseverance during these challenging times. I do wish the board would stand up against the opposition to wearing masks during the school board meetings and ask those that refuse to wear masks to leave the meeting. Not enforcing masking is causing attendance at the meetings to be skewed toward anti-maskers because many people do not feel safe attending. I have a child in middle school, and I would like to voice my support for wearing masks in school, as recommended by the CDC. The community should do everything it can to help protect immunocompromised students. It is callous to think that it is worth potentially sacrificing a child's life just so other children do not need to wear masks. From what I've seen, many children aren't as bothered by masking as adults. My daughter is vaccinated and wears a mask to school. She wants to wear her mask and do her part in trying to end the pandemic. I also, I'd also like to voice my support for the Two Revs contract. There was a comment during the last meeting opposed to how Two Revs wants to make teachers look different than they currently do. The speaker insinuated that diversity among teaching staff would be a negative thing. I was shocked when people clapped after that statement was made. Clearly, we have some work to do. I admire Two Revs' commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion. Most Fortune five-hundred companies have equity, diversity, and inclusion goals and promote these values. Diversity provides additional perspectives that can only benefit our children. And please note that equity doesn't mean the same outcome for every child. It means the same opportunity for every child. I believe children should be educated about racism because it does exist in our community, and they will eventually encounter it. People can try to refute that significant inequalities exist, but facts are facts. Systemic racism exists, and why shouldn't that part of history be taught? Knowing the facts will keep children being more compassionate and empathetic toward others. Thank you, Michelle Cologne.
All right, you're up.
Hello, Sabrina Beebe, Wire Road, Merrimack. I first like to say thank you for allowing the kids to take the at-home COVID test. That is going to save a lot of time out of school and a lot of effort on parents. I, for one, as a parent, went out and bought four boxes of tests the other day. So instead of my kid missing four days of school waiting on a test, I go to school, swab his nose, oh, fifteen minutes later, back in school, I'm like, "You're good to go." Second, I do not support the Two Revolutions contract. Thank you.
All right, and then how many do you have left?
Technically, there's two now, one's quick, and then I have another one, which was in earlier. So this is, I ran over by mistake, so.
Okay.
So this is Ken Martin, Woodward Road. Unfortunately, I'm not able to attend tonight's important meeting, but I did have a few comments to share with you through email regarding three topics. One, if you have not been able to watch the video of the Merrimack High School marching band's performance at the Salem Marching Band Invitational last weekend, I strongly suggest you do so. They put on what was easily one of the best performances of the night and continue a longstanding tradition of high-level musicianship here in Merrimack. Congratulations to all the students and staff on a great performance. In regards to the revisitation of the masking policy for the school district, I implore you to continue to listen to the advice of the DHHS and look at the local data regarding transmission. At the last meeting, Mr. Olson stated that a third of families in Merrimack have opted out of the masking policy, leaving two-thirds of the community following the school district's recommendations. I believe this one bit of data tells you all you need to know in regards to how the families that send children to our schools feel about the masking policy. Three, I support the decision to place a pause on any kind of contract with Two Revolutions at this time. After what has been a tumultuous couple of years, our teachers need to focus on teaching and connecting with our students, not implementing a huge philosophical overhaul. Additionally, any major examination of our systems in place will require the support and cooperation of a permanent superintendent, whoever that may be. Their buy-in is essential, and until we know who that is, I suggest we pump the brakes. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all your hard work and effort. And I do have one more, and it is from Bill Finkston of Jessica Drive. And it's, hello, everyone, please read Haley's email again. The eighth grader has had more common sense in her email than most other comments tonight. Well-spoken, Haley. Best regards, Bill Finkston. P.S. Just say no to Two Rev and no to mandatory masking.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the business portion of our meeting, we will move to recognitions, any recognitions?
Tonight, we have no recognitions, but we're hoping to have some coming up shortly.
All right, thank you, and then next is the informational update, so the superintendent update.
Thank you. All of our schools are recognizing the Anti-Bullying Month. Had something interesting from the Upper Elementary School, from Principal Marsh Mc Gill. They are constructing the students of a thousand paper cranes to capture and celebrate their hopes and dreams for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Their plan is to hang them around the school to remind students that working hard towards goals is very important, and they are setting goals for themselves individually. They presently have for five hundred and, almost five hundred and sixty-five cranes, and she sent a picture. I'll be reporting to you other activities from other schools also. In talking with high school principal Steve Clare, he has indicated that an extraordinary number of students are signing up for after-school activities, which is great news. number of students are signing up for after-school activities, which is great news, because we want our students to be actively engaged, not only during the school day, but in clubs and activities that allow them to express their passion and their interests and their commonalities between each other. And so that is great news, and hopefully I'll have some updates as we go through the school year on the levels of participation by students in those after-school activities. Principal LaBarney Payne Show of Reed's Ferry has indicated that she would like me to recognize Merrimack Hawks cheerleading organization for their generous donation of supplies to Reed's Ferry, so thank you to that organization. Kim and I are continuing our listening tour. We are going around to each school, listening to the staff of each school about what's working well, and what in their estimation do we need to do to improve our programs and services for students. You know, my philosophy has always been, if we want to know how to improve a school system, I won't read it out of a textbook, I'm going to ask the practitioners. So we pay each and every day to be with the children in the school system who know the strengths and who know the needs. We will continue with all of the schools, and we will incorporate that in our meetings with Matt and the construct of the fiscal '23 budget, and report that information also to the Budget Committee. So we're looking forward to continuing that. We will have at least one listening session with the public, and also with some of our students, because it's important to get as many perspectives as possible on what do we do well, but what is, what is the perspective of others on what we can do a better job at in terms of programs and services for children. So we're looking forward to those meetings coming up. One other thing, I did attend this morning with Heather Barker, Director of Special Education, another excellent parent advisory council meeting. Those are always very beneficial. It's always interesting and valuable to hear from parents who have students who have special needs in our school system and are receiving services that are appropriate for those needs, and listening to their perspectives in terms of also what we do well, and some suggestions, always willing to listen to suggestions for improvement. So that is it for my informational update, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any questions for Bill? All right, moving on to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update, Kim Yarlet.
Thank you very much. Mostly, we've been focusing on a lot of professional development for the staff over the last couple of weeks. We've been, had some teachers attend the Universal Design for Learning Lab work with CAST up in Concord last week, and the entire last week, we were working with the staff on cognitive coaching, getting all people who are doing observations caught up on best practices with coaching educators. We have an Envision training tomorrow for all new educators, K through six. We have staff still working on their Canvas updates. I am providing training with the Hegarty Program for all three lower elementary schools, and actually J-Muse as well, which is, it's not a curriculum, but it's a phonemic awareness program that will help boost some phonological and phonemic awareness for students. And that's a list of our professional development that's currently underway or soon to be underway. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Kim? Comments? All right, next up is the Assistant Superintendent for Business Update, Matt Chevina.
Thank you. As Bill mentioned, there's listening tours going on at the schools for budget information. In the finance office, we are working, and we have built the grid for next year's '23, '22, '23 budget. The preliminary information has gone out to the schools. They're going to look and verify last year's expenditures, and we're starting the process of looking at the default budget as a first pass, a first step. So we're getting there, and hopefully, in the end, we'll provide a good product that everybody will be agreeable towards, and the voters will approve. So we're beginning the process. It's that time of year.
Thanks. Shannon?
Wow, this is loud tonight, sorry. It was louder earlier, gosh. So a question on the CIP. Has that been reviewed by, I know that we get it second after the Planning and Building Committee. Has the Planning and Building Committee met to review it yet? And do you know when we'll be seeing it at our table?
No, it has not. We haven't put it together yet, so it'll be a little bit before you see it, so.
Okay.
We're still working on it.
Any other questions for Matt? All right, next up is the School Board update. Right now, we're working on the superintendent search. That's underway this fall. There are stakeholder surveys out on our website. I don't know, did that, do we push that out in our Facebook feed today? If not, we could do that tomorrow, I think.
First thing in the morning.
Okay, so first thing in the morning, just a reminder, the cutoff is tomorrow for those stakeholder surveys, but the important thing is that we do want to hear from you. We want to hear from folks in our community on what they're looking for and qualities. This will be a very transparent process. Over the next couple of weeks, the goal is to get a timeline out on our website so that it's clear how this process is moving along and what steps are next, but it involves stakeholder input at every, at every level. So, any questions on that?
I just wanted to add that I did think that, I do think that I saw that out on your Facebook page went the links for the various Zoom meetings.
It is on the Facebook page, yeah. Yeah, the Zoom links are there. Any, anything on that? All right, Student Representative update.
Thank you. So a couple of weeks ago, some high school students put together a display of artwork and woodshop works for the Dairy Fields Fair, and I'm happy to say their efforts definitely paid off, and I want to congratulate those students because they won first place in the high school division. And upcoming at Merrimack, we're having a Red Ribbon Week. The purpose of Red Ribbon Week is to encourage students to abstain from underage drinking and drugs. This week is sponsored by SAD, a club that encourages, sorry, encourages to say no to destructive decisions. The counselor for SAD is Ms. Nemizic, and if you have any additional questions about the clubs, you can email her at mallory.nemizic@saute26.org. And then, my final thing is, this week, the high school is having a Spirit Week leading up to our homecoming/halloween dance. One of the highlights of this week was Anything But a Backpack Day, which got very interesting with the high school students, including some notable mentions such as a fishing net, kids' toy cars, and a wheelbarrow in the middle of the high school, so.
Hilarious.
So that's what's happening right now at the school. Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments for Caitlin? Okay, we'll move on to old business. The first is the Health and Safety Task Force update on masking recommendations for November.
Yes, thank you. I met with the Health and Safety Task Force last week. We reviewed the Merrimack data that has come from the Division of Public Health Services. That data still indicates that according to their criteria, as you recall, I presented you with their matrix that indicates communities of minimal, moderate, and substantial transmission, but according to their data, we're still considered a community of substantial transmission. So I'm going to recommend, as part of the Health and Safety Task Force recommendation, that we continue into November with the current mask policy, with the understanding that this is not just simply an automatic rollover from one month to the next. We do look very carefully at the data from the state, and we're all, we're all waiting for that time that we can, we can reduce the level of masking in the school system. But once again, my responsibility is to keep the students in school, along with our staff. As you know, we don't have a large supply of substitute teachers, nor does any other school system. It's a significant problem at the present time. So I think the best course of action, and the Health and Safety Task Committee feels the same way, is to continue into November, but we will keep watching the numbers very carefully with, looking for opportunities with a change in data to hopefully reduce the level of masking at some point in time. But I do want to be, continue to be responsible for providing as healthy an environment as possible for our students and our staff.
Any questions, comments?
Lori Peters. Did you ever hear back from Katrina Hansen on the change of what data we're using regarding PCR and antigen tests?
No, I did not, Lori, but I did hear from another school official who did say that they had a contact in the state, and that the state is aware of the change. Apparently, there was some issue with the data, and they are aware of it and are going to include the antigen and PCR test positivity data again. It's supposed to be starting this week. For those of you who are not aware, you know, the state uses, one of the data points that the state uses in its decision matrix, in terms of minimal, moderate, and substantial transmission, is the antigen and PCR test positivity rate over a seven-day period. Well, going back about a week to a week and a half ago, that data changed to just the PCR test positivity rate. And the problem is that that doesn't directly correlate with the DPHS matrix. So the state apparently is aware of it. They are going back to making sure that the data incorporates both the antigen and PCR test positivity rate, because we want to make sure the integrity of the data and what I'm reporting to you is preserved from meeting to meeting and doesn't vary.
Does that answer your question, Lori? Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will move on to the next item, which is Two Revolutions. Before we get started, I just wanted to say that when Two Revolutions came before us publicly, I think it was May 17th or at the end of May, they presented here in this room, and we allowed two weeks for public feedback, and then we voted the first week in June. At that time, I had abstained, because I do know one of the founders, and so I will abstain again tonight as it relates to the conversation that we're having. I may speak as it relates to my role as chair in facilitating a discussion, but I just wanted to be clear about that upfront. All right, I will open up the conversation regarding the Two Revolutions contract.
I make a motion that we sever the contract with Two Revolutions with a 30-day notice according to Section E of the contract.
Second.
Made by Lori Peters, second by Shannon Barnes. Any other discussion? Shannon?
Based on, I don't think a lot of work being done, I would also say that we would want to take all steps possible to recover any funds paid to Two Revolutions for work not conducted.
I actually wrote down what I wanted to say so that I could keep my thoughts clear tonight. I am in support of ending the contract with Two Revolutions for several reasons. First, information has come to light that was not previously accessible to this board in May and June when we first interviewed the vendor. This information, for the sake of neutrality, I believe, has given pause to contracting with Two Revolutions. Secondly, because the issue of critical race theory is so divisive, it is best to distance this community and district from any appearance of partnership with these values. Lastly, the goal of creating a strategic plan within this community and with all stakeholders requires mutual respect and cooperation, but the current contract with Two Revolutions is failing to provide that mutual respect and cooperation. That being said, I am very disappointed with the way in which we have come to this moment. Anyone who knows me personally prior to my campaign for school board, and those who watched, should know that I would never be in favor of the CRT worldview. If you want to know more and have a true education, I'll be happy to share that with you because it's been part of my doctoral studies. I appreciate that people have become more involved and attended the meetings. However, the last several weeks, much misinformation has been shared regarding what Two Revolutions would and would not do regarding the strategic plan for the district. Even after the communication from administration was sent out, many in this community saw the same level of divisiveness as CRT by continuing to communicate this misinformation regarding the strategic planning process and members of this board on social media, both nationally and local. In communications with this board, both in person and by email, it is clear that we have been divided by outsiders in social media that is riddled with misinformation. I am also disappointed by those who know me personally for many years, who never picked up the phone to ask questions about the process and what influence, if any, Two Revolutions would have on our district's core values and mission. Rather, many jumped on the bandwagon of the misinformation and accused board members, including myself, of beliefs and values we do not hold. If we are to move forward in unity, we must all do our due diligence to seek accurate information and wise counsel from those that seek to unite and not divide, from those that desire a thriving school district rather than imposing motives and beliefs on school board members and administration that are simply false. It has been my desire to build bridges within this community, this board, and this district. We must simply work together rather than assume the worst about one another. This is a wonderful town, full of wonderful people who've been actively involved this year, and this is why I support the motion.
Shannon?
Well said. Well said. I echo 99.9%. The only thing that I disagree with is that the line that said partnership with these values. I don't know what those values are. I don't know about critical race theory. I don't want to get on that bandwagon, but I'm going to stand here every day, and I'm going to defend diversity, equity, and inclusion in our school district, because that is what this town is about 100% of the time.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, that's 401. Thank you. Next up is the Third Review of the Use of Masks by Students and Staff Policy. Mr. Olson?
Yes, I want to thank you for your input about interscholastic athletics at the last board meeting. We have made a change to that, as you can see. We have changed the interscholastic masking policy to, for indoor interscholastic athletics conducted in Merrimack School District. Students will be distanced while on the sidelines, and no masks will be required. When an athlete is in competition in Merrimack, no masks are required. However, participants may opt to wear a mask at their discretion. And the remainder is consistent with what we've had previously, that no masking is required for outdoor interscholastic sports conducted in Merrimack School District. So thank you for the input that you provided at the last meeting.
Shannon?
Bill, your memo is dated September 14th. Obviously, the subject shows revision 10-18, so has this been disseminated or not?
It says revised.
Right, but the thing is, the date of the memo is September 14th.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that date is continuing.
But it's, so basically.
So the revision is as of tonight, yes. So please disregard that September 14th date.
So to that end, since I thought, this is exactly the language, I think, that makes sense. I mean, even, you know, the testimony of Dr. Page when she came in as a pediatrician, you know, about cross-contamination, that resonated with me, so I think this absolutely covers what we're looking for. The only area I think we just have to make sure that we can easily enforce is singing in the classroom, and so that's just something I think that, you know, was brought up at our last meeting, but that's going to be, you know, how we can, you know, really reinforce that when they're opting out in classroom. So I just don't know if you had any thoughts on how we would communicate that to parents, and if parents who had opted out, what their options are for their children, if they would be singing in the classroom?
And I will send a communication to parents, just to make sure, and citing the study that this mask policy that pertains to, of course, and singing in classrooms pertains to.
I think my question is about if parents are choosing not to have their kids in the classroom with masks on, would it be held against them if they chose not to sing so they could keep their masks off?
No, so I, no, and I will make that clear.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? It's the third review. Do we want a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the use of masks by students and staff policy.
Do I have a second? Made by Shannon. Any additional discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? That's 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, the initial thoughts from school board regarding the 2022 and 2023 budget. What I'd like to request is that the school board members send to me anything that you would like administration to consider as they're preparing the budget. That is usually disseminated in early December. I know they're working, that's usually almost, I think Matt pretty much works around the year on that, but obviously this is the time of year. So what we've done in the past, for those that are new, is you would just send me a statement. I'll work on consolidating those statements into a, where I see some common themes. But at the next meeting, what then I would ask that you do is you'll be able to read your individual statement so that the public and administration can understand exactly where you're coming from and what your expectations are. And then I'll consolidate, you know, I'll read the consolidated, you know, version, the way that I think that it, you know, I'll try to include, you know, the items that are most important to the board in general. Any concerns or questions regarding that? Okay. Did you have a question Lori?
I was just going to make a, I was just going to make a statement and, you know, when we look at our priorities, I was really very touched by how many people tonight spoke about the quality of education and our teachers and the importance of us maintaining high-quality teachers. And I just think that always should be a priority for us.
And I think another priority that we've heard a lot from people is about the social, emotional. I know the district just continued to make some moves and some focus, even more than what we've had before, on the social, emotional. I know we have some presentations coming up, but I think that that's, you know, when we go into budget season, I think that, you know, right out of the gate, I would say is a priority. All right, anything else on that one? Okay. The next item is the early release days in January and March. Mr. Olson?
Yes, and speaking with our leadership team, we are proposing two early release days as an amendment to the school calendar that are required for pretty much mandatory trainings. The first one certainly is suicide prevention training with our own policy and state law, RSA 193-J, that we require school systems to provide two hours of training each year. There is no other time in the school year calendar and schedule right now. And so I'm proposing that January 14th be an early release day. That happens to be the Friday prior to Martin Luther King holiday. And that, that has always historically, wherever I've been, worked out well for parents and families in terms of it allows us to provide the training for the staff, and it also allows parents who are perhaps going away for that weekend to get an early start. So it works out to both the educator advantage and also the family advantage. The other training is very important also and to helping us to comply with the new student discipline law amendments that went into effect on July 1st, the RSA 193-13. We have been working with Massachusetts General Hospital and a gentleman by the name of Stuart Blon and on the Think Kids collaborative problem-solving training. That is very important for our staff because according to our legal counsel, Attorney Dean Egger, that the amended law, the student discipline law, places greater emphasis on preventative and collaborative problem-solving and interventions for students rather than initial disciplinary responses. And so I'm asking you for this approval. This is also on a Friday, and I hope you will, I hope you will vote to approve these because they are extraordinarily important. And that early release will take place at 1 o'clock on each one of those, each one of those days. Okay?
Shannon?
Is there a reason that even though we just had Dogus Academy, these weren't included?
That, I don't think at the particular time. And quite honestly, I don't want to use a lame excuse, but I hadn't been here that long at that point in time. So I think that was still in the process, we were still in the process of developing what are the mandatory trainings that we need to accomplish. And so I think that at that time, we were not ready to bring them forth to the staff because we had, we had a full agenda. Kim and her professional development planning committee had a number of days that were just packed with very, very important topics, some in terms of social, emotional learning, universal design for learning, et cetera. And so it was, it was very, very dense in terms of what we provided to the staff at that time.
And I'll just add that we did do the Title IX training, which is a mandatory training, and we did the bullying training. So staff did spend that time making sure that we work in compliance with that. So, I mean, a full day of compliance is hard and this kind of caught up with us with the new law around special, around the discipline.
And my other question is, how does this impact, and have you spoken to our union leadership regarding professional development days because this would exceed what their contractual, their contractual requirements? Because how are we going to also make up the time if we're not, if we are dismissing early, if we decide to go with ours?
We have not had discussions with the union on this because it is mandatory training. We do have to find time during the, during the school year to conduct it so that, you know, whatever conversations need to be had with them, we will conduct. But that is, you know, obviously, as we know, that's not an issue that would be subject to collective bargaining, certainly.
Any other comments? Did you want, just kind of a nod of heads, or do you want an actual motion?
I'd appreciate an actual motion because it is a modification to the school calendar.
Okay.
Actually, Cindy, since this starts in January, I was going to request we table it so we can discuss with the unions to make sure that we're not doing something because I don't agree with your position that this does not fall under professional development.
I think that's fine. I mean, there's no urgency, right? We can bring it up, we can bring it back to the next meeting or the one after that, whatever's appropriate. Okay. Anything else on that? All right, tabled. The next item is the partnership between Merrimack School District and Greater Nashua Mental Health Center.
I'd like to present to you Director of Student Wellness, Fern Sidon, and our Director of Special Education, Heather Barker, to present to you an exciting partnership that Fern has initiated with the Greater Nashua Mental Health Association.
Thank you. And before you get started, I also just wanted to take a moment to thank both of you. You both have been very instrumental in so many positive things in this district. And first of all, thank you for coming tonight. But I don't think you get enough thank yous and enough recognition for all that you do and for all of the students that you support and faculty and staff as well. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We have some exciting news to share with everyone.
So tonight, we're going to introduce this idea of an interconnected system of care, which is a kind of big kind of language, but we're going to get through that. And really, what we're talking about is a partnership with Greater Nashua Mental Health. So we hope to set the context tonight about where this comes from and talk about the history of our relationship and seeking partnerships with the community. And then we'll get into explaining what this means for our district and for our students and how it's going to benefit them. So I just wanted to start with this, this term, this interconnected systems framework is really a model for partnering with community mental health agencies and other youth-serving agencies. And it's really about reducing barriers and increasing access to all kinds of prevention supports and intervention services. That's what the sort of idea of ISF is. And it really goes back to 2016 with the system of care law that passed in New Hampshire. And in that law, the DOE and the Department of Health and Human Services were kind of joined together. And it was acknowledged that with the incredibly really serious state of mental health, not only in our state, it is all over the country, and that this was necessary in order to start addressing this together. When we look at students, they exist not just in school or in the community, but they cross all systems. And so how can we work together? In 2019, the 10-year mental health plan included youth for the first time, which was really important. And so really, what this is about is this partnership and coming, seeing this now, finally coming to fruition. And the, one thing I wanted to mention is that the DOE supports this effort right now by supporting districts and establishing multi-tiered systems through providing coaches who work within each region. And that's where our Promising Futures Grant last year came from, as we were exploring opportunities in Tier One through that grant, which was also, by the way, we just received the second round of that today, actually. It was deposited. So, so we wanted to talk about what it means to have a co-located, whoops, what happened this thing? Oh, no. I did want to just, I'll do this one. I just wanted to mention that the district partnership with, with the community started, actually, in 2015. We started our district mental health committee, but notice that that's before 2016. So we kind of preceded and we found that the system really wasn't ready for those partnerships. So during the past several years, we have been really working hard to kind of get to know our community and to develop these linkages. And so finally, this summer, what's exciting is that Greater Nashua Mental Health has started a program. They are hiring school-based mental health counselors. And you're going to learn more about this as we move on. So we have been working with them since this summer, talking to them and getting to know what they have to offer.
Oh, oh my gosh.
It's okay. All right. So when you think about co-located services or partnering with the local mental health agency, there's great benefit to this kind of collaborative relationship. For example, what we're doing really is reducing those geographic barriers for kids and allowing them to access those supports without disrupting their school day, for their families as well, you know, trying to get students to appointments and back to school so that continuity of care is there. There is this opportunity for earlier effective intervention with kids that will increase their wellness and success and address their SEL needs. And finally, it eliminates those wait times, which Fern's going to talk about in a few minutes, for mental health supports in the community by bypassing wait lists. What's really interesting, we have, over the past couple of years, listens to many stories, whether it's a school team meeting around a child, trying to figure out how to provide these supports to them, and then suggesting or helping a family and giving them resource information in the community, sending them off for that, and then families reporting back months and months and months, waiting to try to get in, or families that because of the situation, they just can't pursue it at that time. So we're going to talk a little bit about that.
Oh my gosh, this is really off. I don't know what is going on, as much as we try to get this.
Okay. So I'm going to talk about, I'm not sure what happened to the slideshow, but we really did put it all together. And I'm not sure.
I don't know how it's a complete jumble.
It's like every other page. It's like every other slide. So what does it mean to have co-located supports? What it can mean for us, when you think about, instead of families coming to schools or trying to access mental health services in the community on their own, or taking information from the school to reach out to get these services, you could have the services located in the school building. They are, they are not our employees. They are their own agency still. And yet, they, because they're co-located in the building, we can help facilitate the referrals. There's actually a process called facilitated referral, part of the MTSS system or the interconnected system of care. So in schools, school teams and school counselors and behavior specialists and all the important people that wrap around our children will have the ability to help facilitate a referral to a clinician who actually comes into our schools every day and works with kids that have gone through that process. Confidentiality would be huge. There, you would have the same informed consent for families. Kids would not have access to this counselor because it's done, the co-location is the school setting, but this is still through the Greater National Mental Health Agency. So all of those pieces remain in place, so that would be there as well. One of the big bonuses is that by having that clinician in the building, there is opportunity for consultation to the staff and families when teams are wrapping around a child at school versus a family trying to see if they can get the counselor to be able to come down to the school for a meeting or things like that. So there's opportunities for this collaborative relationship and partnership. All services would be paid through insurance and they, these, these programs where these, they operate in other communities, Fern will talk about that. They have processes in place to help families get that insurance in place. And those community-based supports are provided at the school location. So again, it offers more options for scheduling. Families not trying to get either before or after school. They could happen throughout the day when it works for a student to see that counselor because the counselor's there. And additionally, there would be fewer disruption to the student's schedule and the family's schedule or the guardian's family to get the student to these appointments and that continuity care. So year one would be this year. They can start this with us now.
They are ready to go, actually. And they, at this point, there is only one, one day a week that they have available, but they said that the, the need for this is so great, they have, have more people that they're hiring. And these are people who are absolutely dedicated to school-based services. And again, this goes back to that MTSS process that's happening at the state level where they're working hand in hand. So that when I meet with the coach from the DOE, she's also connected to the work that's being done in Greater Nashua Mental Health. So this is just some information I got from our connection at Greater Nashua Mental Health that, for instance, right now, currently, there's a total of 59 children and youth who have gone through an intake from, from Merrimack who have gone through an intake at Greater Nashua Mental Health. And that is a very small number when it comes to Merrimack's representation at our community mental health agency. So we would hope to see that number grow over time because this is our agency that serves our population. And of those, those students right now in Merrimack or young people, there are, you know, 34 of them are on a wait list. They can't get in. So they're seeking help and they can't get in. 13 ages 11 through 13 and 12 children ages 5 through 10. What happens when you're co-located is that you can bypass that. You do a facilitated referral and then you can have that service during school day without disrupting the school day. You know, that's a very important piece of this is that it can be done in the school setting, but during a free block or a time that is least disruptive to the child's school day. The other piece of information that I just think is very important to understand is that right now, the wait lists are so long that right now, Greater Nashua Mental Health is going out to January or February for getting an appointment, which is really, really sad when you think about what families are experiencing and the crises that they are in. I mean, they're, they're in such dire need. And when they go to make the phone call, it's January or February. And emergency rooms across the state are being used then as a backup. And so they go And so they go to the ER and there they wait and wait and wait. And sometimes they wait for days and days in a hospital setting. And if you look on this, this average daily waitlist, this is provided by NAMI. They've been doing a great job collecting data to show, if you look back in, this is really, really heartbreaking as you look in 2018 and the number of people in quarter, like what did it take your quarter, quarter one? Was three people waiting in a, a hospital for a bed. And in 2021, it was 12 in quarter one. So you just see that this is, this is a very serious issue. And so Greater Nashua Mental Health is, they're really working hard to close the loop here with school-based services. And this is just to give you some ideas of where else this system of care is taking root, which is so heartening to know that all over our region, these services are now coming to schools so that kids don't have the geographic barriers, the time barriers. They can still be in school and still be in their after-school programs, doing their sports and doing the things that bring them such joy, not having to take a day off to go get, to go have therapy or have parents leaving work. They can go directly and make it much more accessible. So you can see that in schools in Hudson, they have, they're working in Hudson, they're working in Nashua, all five schools in Milford. And they are actually right now reaching total capacity. And it is taking, it does take a few weeks to process clients. Right now, there's somebody available for one day a week in Merrimack. I actually heard today, so that, it says three to four students. But actually, if you know, when you think about every other week's schedules, that could be up to maybe six to eight people could at this point, and that, but I did ask her, are you still hiring because we may need more? And she said, absolutely, it's, it's already posted. So, and they have been wonderful to work with.
So what we are looking at for this year would be the co-located services here in Merrimack. The idea of training our counselors, we're looking right now primarily at the high school and potentially at the middle school if we were able to get more days during the week. Those were places where in the past we contracted out for mental health workers. The training around facilitated referrals and then helping families get those services so they don't come in, sit in a meeting and then give in phone numbers or outreach information. We could actually help facilitate that there. And within two to three weeks, that student could be seeing the counselor around their community-based supports. That release of information, which I spoke about earlier, which keeps the control in the parent's hands, that opportunity for consultation with staff, which is only going to improve our preventative and response to students who have SEL needs. And again, there would be no cost to the school district because all of these are paid through insurance, the fees for those services. What you would look at, if you're looking at an integrated system of care, right? And a multi-tiered system of support for kids in that tiered system at that universal secondary and tertiary level, you begin to start looking at opportunities for school-based partnerships, which that could happen in the future. And if you notice at the bottom, it's highlighted, you would create budgets. So for example, in the past, I was in Concord School District and we had a partnership with the mental health agency. And over time, that grew from a co-located model to those folks partnering with the tier two and tier three interventions for kids around social and emotional and behavioral supports and co-leading or facilitating groups with kids. So they might participate with small groups around specific interventions that are research-based. They might, they would potentially participate on the student study teams and the problem-solving teams in the school. They have various names at the different schools. That's something we're working on is having like a name so that families know and everybody knows. That idea of wraparound services for children and families, wraparound teams around kids who have more complex social and emotional needs, consultation on students with acute needs and partnering around that. And you know, you can even get into renew and some of those other really high-level interventions that are evidence-based for kids, either in small groups or individually. Again, that happens through that collaborative partnership between the community resources and the school-based resources. And then as it moves up, you begin to, over time, this, these folks that work in the community-based side of things can partner in the professional development and training for staff and families. Like we've been working on, that's one of the goals, parent engagement, participation on teams and developing tier one programming, tier two programming, tier three. And again, as those evolve over time, as the integrated system of care is risen up, you would have budgeting needs that you would look at. And so you would partner with the community agency to figure out what are the needs, what could happen? And then you identify funds for that. And again, those could be through grants, that's how we did it in other places and we're doing right now in the exploratory grants. So that just, you can actually see the evolution over time of really forming that integrated system of care. So next steps, we have a memorandum of understanding for 2021, 2022. Again, there would be no implications for our budget. And the whole goal would be to create a space in our school where a counselor could come and see students using facilitated referrals and assisting families in bypassing that three, four month, up to six-month wait to actually even get just the intake process started. So that would be our goal. In 2022, 2023, there is the, as part of the partnering around the MTSS work that we're doing with Catherine, who is the coach from the Department of Ed. The idea of expanding like the other communities around us that are part of our collaborative system of care group, there would be looking at expanding that MOU to potentially having things like making decisions about a process to figure out how we would expand those roles and those partnerships. Where are we ready to do that? What could that look like? We are in the very early stages and there's not, you know, it's not fully formed and already a structure in place to be doing it. So really next year, it would be looking at what could this look like in, in a fully evolved system of care? So that's what we wanted to inform you of.
Questions or comments? Lori Rupphaus.
So of course I like this idea. I guess I would say, you know, when a student's in crisis and they have vocalized that they may be suicidal and they have to come back to school in a reentry meeting, this would be part of the reentry plan for that student who would partner with the student and the family and then also explore, also like, you know, so many times they need medical clearance to come back, maybe they could get that right through this counseling service. And we wouldn't have so much anxiety about the reentry.
Absolutely. You know, a long time ago when we first started, we started with that story of wanting to create a, more of a soft landing for students struggling with these issues. And that's a very good example, that of, of how a person who had a more established role and was really co-located with us would be able, the fluidity in which we could access that if we had budgeted for that kind of service to be provided. It would just be a really helpful to have that, you know, kind of ability to access somebody.
Immediate care, just immediate care.
Yeah, with that level of expertise.
Right.
Right there. So it would just, it would, I really believe it's going to make such a difference in the, in the lives of kids going through this.
And their families.
And their families because, yeah. See Shannon and then Lori Peters.
Well, a couple of things. This is great, great news and great information because I think I have heard, you know, parents are just not finding the resources they need available to their kids when they need them. So this is exactly, you know, the next step in evolution. I'm really looking at that last piece where it says expanded role and budget implications. And honestly, it sounds as though if resources are being built up now, the only reason you're not looking at 22, 23 actions now is because they haven't been, there, there's no money in the budget for it. Not that they aren't really, we're not ready to need those, those services.
To be honest with you, Shannon, in, in order for this to rise up and be successful, the co-located service is really the first step. And, and you have all your school counselors in the schools, your school psychology, your behavior specialist. You have that school-based team. And it does take time. For the, those two agencies to sort of coordinate together and kind of form those relationships, that partnership. So we, you know, we have talked about what, what budget implications might look like. We haven't actually had any conversation yet around 2022, 23. But the school actually has to have the MTSS tiered pieces in place, right? So at like tier two, if you're running anxiety groups or you're running groups for kids who might be feeling unsafe, right? And then you're going to do a partnering, both parties have to be ready for that relationship. Just like if you were going to co-teach, you're going to, you don't just put two people in a room and say, okay, here, have at it. You're going to be fine. It doesn't work like that.
Sure.
So really, this first step would be the co-located service. And then you would begin to expand that role through that consultation. Having those times where they're sitting on teams together, where families are coming back into school and they're all working together. And then you start to look at the interventions that you might use for different kids. And what tool would we use for our universal screening, you know, those two, three times a year to mine that gap? How are our kids doing in social, emotional wellness? And then what could we be doing? So that, that takes time to actually put that system, that infrastructure in place.
Sure, sure. And I, I guess the other questions I have, you know, knowing that there's, there's long-term, have we identified the spaces within the district in which we want to use? And are there things that we can do now to prepare those spaces, to be welcoming spaces? So that, you know, we, when those, when those people can come into the facility, that it just doesn't look like, you know, we converted a classroom or a closet into, into a useful space.
We're working on that right now, actually. The therapist who is ready to come into our school is literally tomorrow. And we have a space tomorrow. And in the next, I mean, few weeks, we do happen to have a space in the counseling office because one person is down. But I've been working with Stephen, Steve Clare very closely to talk to him about where they can find a spot for this person to be on Tuesdays. And then hopefully it'll expand that they'll be able to hire more people to be able to have a space in our school. So we still have to work on that. And I think with all the changes at the high school right now with the different rooms that are unavailable and wings and all the changes, it's been hard to kind of, we have to let the dust settle and see where that person will be. But I, I really do appreciate you saying that because part of the agreement on our end is in an MOU is to provide a space where a person can have access to internet, wifi. They bring their own computer, obviously, and that they can do their work in a confidential manner in a space that's conducive to, to support in that way. So it is really actually a very important question. And they wouldn't be able to provide the service if we didn't have that space. So we need to continue working on that.
Good luck, good luck with that. And I think my question's a good finish.
Lori.
So you mentioned it a couple of times, I just really want to highlight it to be clear because it is a concern for parents. Explain the process to protect parental rights for permission to treat, permission to screen, those kind of issues within the system so that parents understand clearly what, what will and will not occur.
Right, so that, that's a great question, Lori. So this is not a school counselor in the school office that a student by alphabet or however they're organized can go see anytime they want to. This is actually as though you're driving to the Greater National Mental Health Center for your appointment. That's what this is. Co-located simply means that they're using a space in the building to provide the services that the family has gone through the full intake process through Greater National Mental Health, has the insurance pieces all in place and will now start to receive that support. So when I say consultation, we're participating on a team. This is different than in, for example, special education. We always have a consent, notice and consent for parents, right? Written prior notice, consent from parents. A counselor or mental health person might be part of a child's IEP team. This is different than that. That person would only be included or be consulting with the permission of the parent. And often families bring counselors to schools to do these meetings and it's very difficult to organize. So again, by having the co-located setting, they are already in the building and would have information with the family about when the appointment is. And so if the parent wanted that person to participate or wanted to share information, that would all be done through that same process. So it is extremely confidential and follows all of the FERPA and HIPAA rules that are expected for any kind of agency outside of the school. And the school is bound by those rules, it's part of the memorandum of understanding. Thank you for asking that question.
I would say one, one way to understand it is it's family, youth-driven. It's not, it's not, it's driven by the parents requesting it, it's not driven by. And if though a student is, you know, having difficulty in school, it could be something that, you know, you know, we have this person and would you be interested in talking to that, to Greater National Mental Health about? And so that's where we can facilitate a connection being made. But it's not driven by the school, really.
Jenna, could I add one more thing? I'm sorry. And, and the other thing I would add, the final comment about that, is that if a child needed, required those kinds of services as part of their educational program in Merrimack, we would be responsible on the educational side for providing those. And again, with prior notice and parent consent to do that. So keeping the two things quite separate, I think that's important that families know that in our community. I'm sorry.
I was just, I thank you for that clarity.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you so much. This is huge. I interestingly just started a job as an SEL interventionist in one of these school districts. So I have seen firsthand, in fact, in just a month, have seen how this plays out exactly because a student presented with an issue, the school went, ah, this is above what we can do. They called the parent, the parent said, oh my goodness, yeah, we need help, you know? And then there was the facilitated referral. And I thought to myself, we need this. And then this came up on the agenda and I was like, you gotta be kidding me right now. So this was like awesome. And you know, what's, what I love too is that you have the plan for these things that need to happen because I'm over here now, right?
Right.
So, you know, some of these districts are now through grant funding, through Project Aware, which I'm sure you're aware of, have provided funding for people like me to go into elementary schools to help provide that support aside from, you know, people like you, people from school counselors, aside from that, to provide that tier one support for kids to hopefully do that ounce of prevention so that we don't have the 10 pounds of cure. There'll always be the one pound of cure, right? You'll, they'll always be those kids that need those embedded mental health. But I mean, now is the time to start. I'm so grateful that you guys have made this partnership. I think it's huge for our district. And I know that budgeting will be required for those next two phases. But I hope we pursue really hard because I mean, I sit in these meetings all day in these MTSSV, you know, meetings. And I hear about all these things that Project Aware and these kinds of grants can, can provide to districts at no cost initially. Eventually they will have to roll in, but there's grants available for us to, that, to take this, these first steps and extrapolate it out in ways that will impact the students in the districts just on a level that you think you understand. I thought I understood, you know, even being on a school board, I really thought I understood. And then I went into the school and I went, oh my goodness, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a bottomless pit of need. You know, I mean, need. And you go to every teacher's classroom and they basically grab you and say, please don't leave me. You know, and we need this, we need this. I mean, teachers are, anybody who's in a school is laughing because they know what I'm talking about. You know, and, and the other famous line is, do you provide SEL for teachers too? That's the other thing they say to me every day. But it's just, it's so needed. And I'm so grateful that we're taking these steps because it is, like you said, huge. And you know, any parent who's had to take a kid to a counselor knows it, it's almost impossible to find a time slot, you know? Do you pull them out of their favorite sport because it's the only time that they can go see a counselor? To, to have it available in school, you know? And, and it's just, it's, it's beyond words, so I'm very grateful.
You know, today I spoke with Sean, the woman from Greater Nashua. And she said, and I didn't realize this because she's, the facilitator referral in the school, if the, if the counselor, the therapist were to make an appointment for the parent to come into the school and do the referral process, it could take like three to four weeks just to get that person into the system. But if a parent is able to spend one morning, eight to, you know, 11:30 or something on a Monday through Friday at, in Greater Nashua, that student could start therapy the next week. that student could start therapy the next week at the school. So it's just like reducing this time to access the support. Unfortunately, right now, there's not going to be like a lot of people that they can see on the caseload, but hopefully that'll improve. So.
Yeah. And I, I agree with everything that everyone has said. I mean, this, this is great. And, um, you know, I think more than anything, you know, pulling a kid out of school, a child, um, for an important appointment, you know, one of the things is that when kids start to have, you know, we know this, when kids have emotional issues, trauma, things, major things going at home, loss of a parent, you know, a variety of things, their grades can suffer. Um, you see, you know, you see what math and English, the core subjects first, and then it's a slippery slope from there. So that time of commuting, instead of a child missing one class, they miss a half a day. By the time, you know, if you're driving all the way down to Nashua traffic and back, you're gone three or more hours. So I think this, you know, being student-centric is so important. Honestly, I'd like to see more things that we have partnerships with, um, with our schools, whether it's, you know, private music lessons and maybe, you know, a lot of families hire private tutors and, you know, finding a way to make some, um, facilities available um, to lessen that, I think, A, to provide the service for the child that is working on it and needs it. And also the less than the burden on families with the pickup, drop-off, pickup, drop-off everywhere. Um, you know, those are the types of things that I like to see in the district. And this, this makes a hundred percent. I mean, this is fantastic. Um, thank you for the work and pulling this together. And I think, um, I think our students and our student community will benefit from this tremendously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the guaranteed maximum rate for health and dental insurance for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Matt Chevino.
Yeah. Thank you very much. As you know, when we look towards, uh, putting together the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, uh, one of the big expenses we look at is the cost of health insurance. And around this time during the year, we're given a guaranteed maximum rate increase as to what the maximum amount, the rate will go up. It usually comes in perhaps a little bit lower or at that. Um, this year for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're talking about a guaranteed maximum rate decrease of one point four percent for health insurance and one point five percent for dental. So we're looking at an automatic decrease. So this is, uh, it won't be any less than, or less, the, the negatives are messing me up right now. So I need a hand here. It could be more than a negative one point four, but this is the total amount that it will decrease. So that, that's good news as we start the budget process.
Thanks, Matt.
Questions there? All right. Uh, moving on to the construction update on Woodbury Street and the roundabout. Matt Chevino.
Thanks. Um, Woodbury Street, as you know, as part of the, uh, the town center committee work, um, has been slated to have a, a sidewalk. That's the street that goes down from McKelwayne to, um, I would call it Connell's Plaza, whatever you want with CBS is. Um, and so there is going to be a sidewalk on the, uh, the right-hand side of the street as you're walking down. Uh, the work is already started. The trees have been grubbed out and everything's been cleared. There's going to be drainage put in there. It's, it's quite the project. It's, uh, twelve-hundred-and-fifty linear feet of sidewalk, uh, five feet wide. They're going to increase the width of the road to twenty-four feet from where it is right now because it's just kind of very narrow. And it has been a cause for concern as far as high schools, high schoolers exiting the building in the afternoon, both driving and both pedestrians walking down that street because right now there's nowhere to walk but in the middle of the road. So it has been a cause for concern. There has been some incidents there in the past. And hopefully with the winding of the road and the clearing of the sightlines and everything like that, um, and the, the sidewalk that's five feet wide with a curb on it, it'll, it'll take care of that, that safety issue and make it a safer avenue for kids to traverse down that hill or up that hill, choosing which way, where they, they, they want to go. So that's, uh, you know, a town of Merrimack project. Um, that's not a, a school district project, although it affects us greatly. And we really appreciate them, uh, moving forward with it and, uh, getting it done. So that's something that's really kind of awesome to finally see, uh, come to fruition. Um, the next one we have is the roundabout. That is a town of Merrimack, uh, project, not a, a school district project. But the last of the granite curbing is going to go on there. It's slope granite curbing. It's going to be, uh, seeded and loamed. And pretty soon, within the next week or so, we've been asked if we could provide a school bus. And they're going to do a videotape and we're going to watch the wheels on the bus go round. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I, I just couldn't stop myself with that. We're going to watch the school bus go around the roundabout, which is really kind of cool because it's the first one in the town of Merrimack. And they can be very effective traffic control devices. That area, uh, where, um, Turkey Hill and Babusak Lake Road come, is it Turkey, it's Turkey Hill, right? Yeah, Turkey Hill. I always get them messed up. Turkey Hill and Babusak Lake Road, that, that narrow fork in the road has been a, I don't know if there have been lots of accidents there, but there have been lots of close calls. Um, especially if you're going towards the middle school and you want to veer off left. There's not a great line of sight. So this is going to be good for the, the buses, good for the traffic, good for the town. And I think it's probably going to look pretty cool in the end anyway. So we'll be looking forward to that. And again, we, we thank the town of Merrimack for, uh, for getting that project done and, and getting that thing completed. The, the, the sidewalk on Woodbury has a substantial completion date of December third. So it's going to be around six weeks. There's a lot of work there because there's a lot of drainage there because you just can't put a sidewalk there because it's going to be, it's going to become like a rapid as far as the water goes. So there's, there needs to be a lot of drainage put in and captured and piped away. So it's a lot more involved than it seems. But two really great projects, uh, that I think will make this town really better in the long run from a traffic control and from an aesthetic, uh, purpose too. So that's it.
Shannon.
The Woodbury Street project is part of the town center committee work, correct? That's part of their.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The sidewalk on O'Gara.
Yep.
That we're going to be talking about.
But the Woodbury was part of that as well.
Yeah, the Woodbury was definitely, it's, it was always, it was always been part of it. Yeah.
So, and I want to say thank you because you are actually the school board delegate for the town center committee. And thank you for all your work and, and input, uh, because I'm sure it made this project a lot more successful for our district as well. So thank you for that.
Well, that explains what I saw this afternoon, I think.
I didn't know what it was.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Um, the next one is the position on proposed, um, it was, uh, it says proposed warrant article via petition, but it would be more the petition for special meeting, which I think translates to the warrant article. Um, this is an item that came to our attention quite a few weeks ago. I'd like to thank everyone for their patience as we were able to get input from our legal counsel. Uh, we have received that input and we have reviewed it together as a board. Um, and I know that we had about a hundred and fifty-some signers on that petition and it had to do with making masks optional at all times during school, just on all school district properties for students, staff and visitors. That was the nature of that petition warrant article and, um, or of that petition, um, per se. And I just wanted to turn it over to Board Member Rothaus.
So the, the board declines the petition request to hold a special meeting.
You got to make a motion, it's a motion, right?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. So I'll entertain a motion.
Oh.
That's right. And you can go ahead and, oh, you're good.
You want me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. The board declines the petition to request to, to hold a special meeting on the citizens petition to make wearing of the face coverings on school property optional for all students, staff, visitors, that it do such for the following reasons. The board, not the citizens meeting, is responsible for adopting the policies of the district. The legislator and the Department of Education have granted policymaking authority to the school board. The legislator has not granted policymaking authority to the school district meeting. The petition article goes beyond the authority of the granted, granted by the legislator to the meeting. The board's current policy is lawful. It is a subdivision of the state. The district, it is following the health recommend, he- health recommendations of the Department of Health and Human Services. The citizens of the district should not be required to participate in a special meeting where a yes vote would produce an unlawful outcome. And then can I just say my personal opinion or wait?
I just, oh yeah, you can, you, I'll take a second.
Okay.
I'll have a second. Made by Jenna. Okay. Lori? Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes. So, so the cost of this motion would be between twenty-five thousand and, uh, thirty thousand dollars. And the board would not have to accept the outcome of that vote. The board is the elected body for the town of Merrimack. So the cost associated with this petition and then the outcome would not be what the petitioners wanted. And so it would be a slippery slope also to allow, um, you know, to elect a school board and then, um, have petition warrant articles to change, uh, the, the votes of the board.
Any other comments? Okay. I'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries five zero zero. Uh, now for, um, new business, we are in the other section. So if there's anything, um, that the board would like to see addressed in a future, um, at our future board meeting, please, Shannon.
Um, when I came on the board years ago, over a decade ago, um, we used to have board assignments that were assigned to different curriculum areas. And a few years ago, we as a board decided in lieu of that, because based on the work that's being done in the cyclical nature of that work, that instead we would get quarterly curriculum updates from administration about the curriculum work being done throughout the district. Um, that obviously because of COVID was paused for appropriate reasons. It was more about keeping your head above curriculum water. But now that we're back in school full-time, um, I would love to see those resume. So, uh, I know that, you know, probably the couple of weeks after each quarter, we did get a curriculum update about the work that was done that quarter, um, you know, what was reviewed, you know, how it's being measured in the district, if it's already been implemented. So it kind of gave that good, the whole, like holistic recap of how curriculum is, is going throughout the district. So if we could resume those now that we are back in the school full-time, I think that would be very beneficial for the board and the community at large.
Thank you. Any other new business? Lori Peters?
As we move into the budget season, I think it would be helpful since we have so many new people involved in our board meetings. Do you have a refresher on how that budget process works? The responsibility of the board, the responsibility of the budget committee, and ultimately the deliberative session so that we all understand that process. It's a little confusing sometimes.
Great suggestion. Thank you. Any other new business? I have a couple of items. Um, one thing that, uh, Mr. Olson and I had spoken about, I think quite a few weeks ago, so I know it's on the radar, is uh, and tonight's topic reminded me of it, which is the youth, youth risk behavior surveys. I know that the board, you know, periodically, I think it's every three years or so, those surveys are, and I know we haven't had an update on that for at least a couple of years. And and I think, you know, that's really important information. It's, it's not usually pleasant to hear. Um, but it's important information to hear as it relates to those survey results.
Yes, that, it's more understanding that, that information probably has not been shared with you recently, nor shared with the public. And I think that's, it's extremely important that it's, uh, it's provided to you and it's provided to the public and we, we review the results because that, that has important implications, um, for the services that we provide to students based on the expressed needs uh, and has budget implications. So it's important that you be informed of that and the public is informed of that also.
I thank you very much. Um, and I had one other item and I, I don't know if it's best under new business or comments, but I'm going to state it here. Uh, we don't necessarily have to put it on an agenda, but one thing that has come to my attention that I wanted to bring up is um, participation as it relates to sports activities right now. Um, just coming out of COVID, I know there's certain guidelines we have and the NHI AA has regarding grade, grade point, um, you know, requirements, um, to be able to participate. Um, I don't know what we've done internally, um, but I think there are options and may we, we have done this or not, I don't know. But there may be options to appeal that for certain students. Um, the reason I say that and I, you know, at the risk of not wanting to, not appreciate the rigor that's expected, but we've been in very, very hard times for kids. And um, some of these kids use sports because that's what they have. And so I would ask that when we look at, I, I wish I had, had thought of this before we went into the fall season, but it has come to my attention. And so before we begin the winter season, I'm not, um, making any kind of a mandate. I'm just asking for some grace as we look at our student athletes, as we go into the next athletic season, um, to see if there's anything creative around that. You know, if there's students and their families can sign a contract, um, you know, to work or if we can, again, maybe provide even greater tutoring support or, or something to help them be successful. But I feel that some of these students will not be successful if they can't participate in something that, um, is so critically important to them and their mental health.
I'll be glad to have a, a meeting with our administrators and the athletic director about, about this and report back to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, moving on to the approval of the minutes, the October fourth, twenty twenty-one minutes. I'll entertain a motion made by Shannon, second by Lori. Um, any comments or updates? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. That's five zero zero. Um, the consent agenda. Do we have anything on consent? It doesn't look like, no. Okay. So we'll skip right over that. Uh, moving on to, um, committee reports and the other item, number nine, other committee reports. Shannon?
I have two. Um, so last Thursday, the professional development committee met and let's see if I can bring up my, uh, so we had subcommittee reports regarding recertification, um, individual professional development plans, obviously that you need for research. Um, technology updates. So I know that we are, um, between directors right now. So I think that that is something that is being addressed. Um, but we do have someone filling in on the committee or, um, is new to the committee that's kind of taking that on to see what technology near, needs there may be. Um, and also making sure that we have good representation of our paraprofessionals on the committee. Um, and making sure that when it comes to things like, um, those who would be certified, um, teachers within that paraprofessional rank, that they are properly supported in the process as well, so that they keep their certifications current. Um, so the, uh, master plan revisions committee, um, had, did an update, um, and then, uh, basically went over some, uh, special projects that were, uh, proposed. So uh, the special projects funds that were allocated to the high school were, um, approved for this year. And, um, it's, it's supporting homecoming to get back to normalcy. And then, um, uh, training materials on, uh, through my learning plan for, uh, staff and supervisor materials. And then, uh, they did some surveys, um, surveying as well that is coming back. Uh, so we have a lot of work this year and, uh, the committee is, is definitely working toward that, uh, those ends. Did I miss anything of, of great?
Uh, I'll just share for the public that the surveys went out to teachers and it was regarding, um, our August Academy and the professional staff that we provided.
I did not have my notes on that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And then I, um, on Saturday, And then I, on Saturday, I represented the board as the delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly. And everything that was in your packets went as planned, as presented really. So, but then there was another presentation that came to the floor. And what it was about was there was a, a resolution presented to keep an option for remote participation. So as you've probably seen, it doesn't happen often, but when it does happen, we may have someone dial into our meetings. And they basically want to make sure that that right was assured in future. Now again, if someone does dial into our meetings, we still have to have a majority of our board present, like a quorum of our board present. But it still allows for someone to dial in so that we can get full participation. And, you know, as we're elected to do those roles, everything we can do to make sure we can participate in those roles, we can do so. And that, that did pass, even though it was a motion that was presented that day on the floor. A couple of continuing resolutions were withdrawn because of their specificity to COVID and that they weren't really continuing resolutions because they were technically outdated. So, so that was it.
Well, thank you for that. And thank you for representing us there, especially on a Saturday. Yeah. Thank you. Any other committee reports? So Lori Peters?
I just want to announce that the Budget Committee has made its schedule for the upcoming budget season. And the first meeting is November 16th at the high school, 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, correspondence. I have, I'll go ahead and start. The correspondence that I, reporting on tonight, it's a total of nine to the entire board. We had an email regarding two revolutions against masking requirements. We have two emails, concern for lunchroom and our recess protocols. We had two. And then we did have a follow-up regarding the status of masks, the mask optional petition. I had an email to me regarding the assistance needed for historical finance records from one of the booster clubs at the high school. I put that person in touch with Matt Chevonal. I did have another email, support for continuing the protocols around allowing families to opt out. I did have an email to myself and administration. It was from a parent that was following up regarding their child, who is a high school student. Any other correspondence? Seeing none? We will close that and move on to the final portion, which is the public comments on the agenda items. If anyone would like to address the board at this time, please come up and stand. And Shannon has three emails, so we'll continue to cycle if that's needed. So anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
And I, you know, I have to admit, I'm old school. I count on the paper. And there's no paper anymore. So I don't get that information. The only thing I would ask the board to do on that is there is that weekly free handout that The Telegraph still does. If you guys could take a section in there and really put school board agenda and discussions in there, I think that would be a wonderful thing. It would certainly help me keep up to date. The other thing, I just don't understand the issue on masks. I'm missing the Red Sox game and I'm wearing a mask. I don't want anybody to get sick from me. I'm vaccinated. It's something that I felt I needed to do for my family, for myself, and for all the public. The same thing with the mask. I mean, this is not a freedom issue as it said. I mean, nobody wants to wear the mask. We're doing it out of concern for our community, concern for other human beings in this town. And that's what we talked about, or that's what you mentioned at the very beginning. It's just common sense. Is it necessary? I would hope that we'll be done with them in the not-too-distant future. But for now, why are we going to take a chance? All the comments about the other countries are changing. Okay, that's great. We have had over 700,000 deaths. Many of them were preventable. We could have just worn masks. The flu season last year was so mild. Why? People wore masks. It's, again, not something that I want to do long-term, but it's something that we need to do. And I don't understand how protecting your children has become such a political issue. Protecting children should be the bottom line on this. Anything else is irrelevant. And I'd rather take an extra step for protection than spin the gun and play Russian roulette.
Thank you.
I have an email from Brittany Damon, Turnbuckle Lane. Please remember, equity does not mean equality. Make sure you understand the difference before you decide to support two revs. And that's the end of the message. And Mr. Fulmer, I don't think you'll be disappointed on the score when you catch up to that at home. It keeps zapping, it keeps zapping my wrist throughout the whole thing. And I'm from New York. It was hard, so.
Okay, next up, please.
Gem Motel, Ellie Drive. First, I just wanted to join in on thanking our school, school board members and all your hard work. I see you guys disagree, discuss, and you do it in such a professional way. And it really sets the stage for our meetings. I think some of our meetings go way better than some other towns. So thank you very much for your service and all your hard work. Also, thank you to our administrators that are here and all your hard work in a very, very challenging time. I work as a lunch recess monitor in another district right now. I kind of call myself the school babysitter because I, you know, the teachers are tired. I take their kids and feed them, play with them, send them back. So while it's, you know, I don't want to downplay it because it is three hours of pure chaos. And during those times, a lot of behaviors do manifest during unstructured play. And also during unstructured times, a lot of kids will share with me some things that are going on in their lives one-on-one. So I do want to say that I share in your concerns for social emotional learning needing, being needed and needing to be a priority. I am excited about the Greater National, Nashua, Greater Nashua Mental Health Organization being a part of, of our partnering with the Merrimack School District. That sounds amazing because the needs are huge. And I see it every single day. And I, I love that. Just like, I just wanted to share like just a few quick suggestions, if you're open to them. One thing that the Nashua School District is doing is with, only with parent opt-in. Don't, it's never done without their permission. School nurses are going to be providing COVID tests for kids. So if a kid is sniffling in school and there's a concern, with parent permission, they can get swabbed, sent back to class. So I just don't know if that's something that we could consider in our district. Also, I have heard around, and I haven't really done the research, but I've heard that in Merrimack School District, the paras, paraprofessionals and substitutes are paid at a lower rate than some surrounding school districts. If that is true. We do have, obviously, it's a challenging, challenge to keep enough paras and subs employed. It might be an opportunity to consider a pay raise to make us competitive. And then my last thing was that, this is a buzz. I, you know, I've never really confirmed this, but I have heard from teachers and staff that sometimes they're not consulted with school policy changes before they're been made. And even with hiring for teacher teams, administrators, I know in our school district, I was even offered to sit in for the new principal or assistant principal as a lunch monitor. So, and I appreciated that because it does matter of how people, you know, whether, having input from the actual team on the ground of whether, whether a staffer or candidate is a good fit for the team is important. And I love Mr. Olson and Ms. Yarlet that you are going around to teachers and staff and getting their input. I think that's an amazing thing. And I thank you for that because I think really, it's really important for you to get the feedback from the people on the ground. So thank you. And thank you for, everyone, for all your hard work. You're amazing.
Next is from Lila York, 46 Belmont Drive. I'm not sure what we are really supposed to say anymore to get all the people on the board to understand that we are fighting for choice. Clearly, we have a school board member who thinks we are being unreasonable. We are trying to fight for everyone's choice to mask. Like I said before, we are all in the same storm, but not in the same boat. What might be best for one person might not be for another. I don't think anyone in this room right now is right or wrong. We are clearly in a time where scientific data is being used to fuel every side. I've worked in the food industry basically my entire life. I've had training in the cross-contamination field and it has been etched in my brain for years. For 15 years, I worked in food service in a nursing home. I was also educated on the health side of it as well. I can tell you I've, I have seen so much cross-contamination going on, it baffles my mind. Even the people who think they are doing a good thing are spreading germs like wildfire. As soon as you touch that mask on your face, you are supposed to wash your hands right away, and that's not happening. They also would teach you to throw it away as soon as you touch it and get a new one. Kids are fidgeting with them as well as grown adults. We could possibly be spreading it around more than we know. Not to mention the studies done on masks that found E. coli and other germs as well. Last year, we had strict mask policies in place throughout the state. My child still got sick two times last year, the same as she always does. Not once was it COVID, which I am thankful for. But if masks work so great, how did this happen when COVID is much more contagious? How did a normal cold manage to sneak under her mask twice and get her sick? My guess is it's because of cross-contamination. I'm also concerned about the guidelines we are following for quarantine. How is this making any sense to people? It has already been determined that the vaccinated are spreading it just as much as the unvaccinated and getting it as well. Can you not see the hypocrisy? Look at the studies coming out of Israel. They are ahead of the US and are already into their third booster shot and talking about the fourth one because it's not helping. How is it that we are letting people who could be wrong or be persuaded with money or an agenda to tell us what to do or believe? I find it very concerning that we are listening to a bunch of people who are all being funded by each other to follow the science. It's their science. Let's stop pretending that these people have our best interests at heart because they don't. Again, if it was about our health, the borders would be closed. Millions of people wouldn't be pouring into our country, spreading the virus. We have all been trying hard to fight. There are people with money and power that manipulate people into doing what they would like. I leave you with these thoughts. Hitler was once in government and millions of people listened to him. Jeffrey Epstein was covered up by people in the government and young girls were continued to be taken advantage of. Dr. Death, aka Dr. Christopher Dutch, was a real story in the US. And people tried to stop him, but money was more important. The movie Concussion was based on a true story and deaths of athletes were hidden and covered up because money was more important because of the NFL funds money into our government. Pfizer paid the largest criminal fine in US history and they agreed to pay out $2.3 billion. Make no mistake, people might be gaslighting us. All we want is the freedom to choose for everyone in our community and country for vaccines and masks. And there's no other one. There's one more left.
Does anyone else want to speak tonight in the audio?
Okay.
Okay.
Then the last one is Rosemarie Rung, 21 Mysterio Drive. I want to thank the school board for their common sense decision to decline this special school district meeting. I am very concerned that the cost of holding this meeting and an extra election day will be taking tens of thousands of dollars away from our students. Any vote is advisory anyway. And to spend tax dollars when most parents agree with the mask policy is an absurd waste of money. I hope in the future, anyone considering such a petition for a special meeting would do their homework and consider the burden on the taxpayer before moving forward. And making one more check, and I think that's all of them.
Okay. Last call out here. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn made by Jenna, seconded by Lori. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Thank you for taking time out of your week. And have a great night.